To give us some better transparency, what you're thinking, what your master plan is for this unit, why you're making, I think you're gonna make a decision tonight. And it seems to be rushed, in my opinion. I don't think there's been any community forums, there's been no questions and answers. Some back and forth discussion. You've heard from us a lot, we've heard nothing from you guys about why we want to do this. It doesn't fit with the master plan. Is it the money? I don't know, but thank you.
Hope before you go, number one, thank you for your letter. Number two, I misspoke last meeting and I owe you an apology. After public comment commences, you are free to come up a second time. And I feel like I denied you that after your letter. So, I misunderstood the policy and that's my mistake.
No trouble, so we're good to go. So Sue, are you able to read Jan Quiggle's letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Tonya North, I live at 1040 Lincoln Lake. I also own North Star Antiques. I am a lifelong resident of Lowell. And I own North Star Antiques now for five years and have done business in here for about 20 years. And my family has a history of businesses in Lowell for, gosh, I didn't want to do the math, since the 1940s, how's that? So, quite a while. You know, my letter was read at the last time, at the last one because I had to hurry. I didn't know a lot of what was going on. And I think there's one common theme here. I want to start out by saying, I'm not against Copper Rock, but I'm also not for Copper Rock because I don't think there's enough information that we have to be able to make that decision. I think if anything comes out of that meeting, I think that's what I'm hearing, just sitting. I wanted to sit back and hear what everybody else had to say. I'm really disappointed that after rushing and trying to watch the last meeting, that I haven't heard from the council themselves. Exactly what Eric just said, I was like, that's exactly what I was thinking.
I make exception to that, please.
Well, so no, I'm gonna say this Cliff, you're the only one that asked a question.
No, I posted an explanation for my vote. But I...
You posted, you posted again.
The only available avenue I have is my Cliff Yankovic City Council page.
I'm just talking about my ability to watch. Nobody asked, like, there was no questions. You were the only one that asked him a clarifying question when they finished proposing their second proposal.
I thought you wanted an explanation for why we voted the way we voted.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I didn't hear a lot of questions asked, like, about the parking that was brought up, like, let's beat it, that horse, right? Okay, I've been on record saying this, I spend over $500 a month to get people to come into my store. If you don't understand retail, then, because I don't understand construction. So, but if you've ever been in my store, you'll know, I utilize every tiny little space there is, okay? So, I get when you're trying to put, you know, a square peg in a round hole and you're gonna try and do what you can in that. In retail, you deal in either quantity or quality or a little bit of both. You've gotta have the traffic, you've gotta have good quality and good quality customers coming in. That means it's not all gonna come from the community here. I'm not gonna get people in Lowell, Michigan, coming in my store every single day unless I have something that's perishable, that they're gonna come in. Like, Marty's got food that they're gonna be addicted to, they'll come back in and get some good stuff. But that's not every downtown business. The goal is, that's why Lowell has so many events. We're so good because we bring all these people into town. We spend a lot of money, not just in advertising, but in promotional things. And the energy expounded by our chamber conference to fill Main Street on events. It's second to none, I think that's why it's such a good thing in this community and people are drawn to it. But when you're talking about, okay, I'm just gonna say this. My confidence level dropped to the floor when I heard, I don't know which one of you it was, that said, we like to create, when it was pertaining to the parking, we like to create a problem and then we'll find a solution. That did not instill any confidence in me as your organization is the right one because you don't even understand what we deal with on a regular basis. You've heard a lot more of it in the last two meetings, but that's just a snippet. That's, you know, two meetings is not enough to understand what we're dealing with on a regular basis. Everybody here had some really good comments, everybody did. I think there's some good stuff being talked about. But I don't think you have enough information to make a decision tonight. So if anything, I really would hope that would be, that would be the biggest thing that comes out of here is, sometimes the answer is yes, sometimes the answer is no, and sometimes it's maybe later. That's how I see it, I just...
What was that referring to, create the problem and create the solution?
Parking.
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 Parking?
Yep, parking. That was a quote from one of your gentlemen, I was, I...
Tonight, or the first meeting?
First, last, not, not, no.
It was the presentation.
The 25th, the presentation on the 25th.
Yeah.
Yeah, the presentation on the 25th. I got the article from Lowell's First Look. It was quoted in there and then I was able to watch it after I wrote my letter, I wasn't able to, so I missed out on some of the information.
I think we kind of walked that talk to the fact that we lowered it. And I think it's important that, you know, I don't want to speak for everyone up here, but we'll have our time, but we were actually less units than a project that a lot of people keep talking about tonight. We were less units in our original proposal than that. So our parking count, based on that alone, was less. So, I just want to clarify that.
And if I understood correctly from what the city manager said, your proposal still only added eight to that. And I, I don't know, I'm in that parking lot every day. I don't see how we can bring in more. The road is very narrow for people to go down now, people go down there often too fast. Currently, we also, it's amazing, honestly, how much of the parking is taken out because we've got, next door to me is Journey's Time. I am the only business, I'm sorry, not the only business, but I'm one of the few businesses downtown that's retail that is open seven days a week. So, we see the parking issues all the time, but we don't even have full capacity, really, in the businesses. The one next door to me is only open Thursday through Sunday most of the time, but not necessarily all of the time. Like Burl isn't that open on Sundays across the street. They're Karen Wade, and she's the one who would talk to you about the parking issues with businesses because she's usually on it and she's usually getting you guys on it. So, those are all things that could get worse before they get better, I guess is what I'm trying to say is, maybe I should be thankful that Karen's gone to New York right now because that opens up some parking spots for us. But it's going to get worse, so I think approaching this in a way that says, okay, how can we make this work? And I will tell you this, I'm gonna go on record saying I don't think Lowell's gonna need another restaurant right now. The restaurants are great, as long as you're open during the day, that's really gonna help the businesses. But for the businesses to benefit from nighttime, it means we have to be open nighttime. And then again, you have to understand what it's like to own a retail business where you're already working seven days a week, putting in a lot of hours to try to get that traffic in and turn over your inventory quick enough to get new inventory so they have to come back all the time. There's really a lot to be learned. And I think Burl and Eric certainly understand that about bringing the diversity in because in a small town, you gotta kind of pack in the diversity. And in order to do that, you can't just bring in one more restaurant, that's not being diverse. Being diverse means what other, and I get them all the time, I get people who come in going, oh, we would love to have a shop downtown. But some of our rents have gone up so much so that it's not even affordable for some. I'm just really lucky that I've been able to do what I do. But I will tell you this, I wouldn't probably exist in the city limits either if I wasn't selling online, especially through COVID, that saved my little butt that I was selling online because you don't get the traffic unless you're really paying for it. And our online sales is a lot of what helps us do that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Cliff.
Mary from Fallout 202 West Main Street. I choose to move from the Grand Rapids area and purchase property in downtown Lowell two years ago specifically because of the active small-town character, authentic historic feel, and river advantages that downtown Lowell offers. Coting from the city's website, the Downtown Historic District Commission was created to safeguard the heritage of the city by preserving the downtown area which reflects elements of the cultural, social, economic, political, and architectural history of the community. So while it's my understanding that the proposed construction site lies just outside the defined historic district, that same property directly affects the historic district in multiple ways, access, parking accessibility for downtown patrons and visitors, and vantage. Has the Downtown Historic District Commission had a chance to review and weigh in on the proposals?
It would be no, it's not in the historic district, so...
I did, yes, I deluded to that. But it is, the historic district is directly impacted because it is just outside it. So it may be worth consulting then. And I will also add, on my side of the blocks, the south side of Main Street behind our building, I think that may have been included in the parking count, but those are all private spots as well. Just something to keep in mind. And as somebody pointed out, will this require a ladder truck for the city? Because they cost $1.5 million and who will be footing that bill? Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry Beecham again, 924 Riverside Drive. Andy, first let me say, from what, I think this is progress. I like, I mean, I think it's much more attractive than what I envisioned earlier from conversations. And again, I have nothing against Copper Rock. I think, again, I'm a Hope College grad, the owner is a Hope College grad, so just a plug there for Hope College.
No doubt.
I have nothing, I just had some issues parking and that type of thing. My question for Andy, I know that we talked, they've talked about the height of the building. So, you have the height of the building, but you're talking about using a deck on top of it. Does that, so it's open air? Are there any rules or anything of that? Do you have to, because again, what I'm looking at is, you look at that building and then all of a sudden you're really having another story on top that you're using. There's not a structure there, but I'm just asking, is there any rules and regulations about having, you know, having that at 40 foot and then maintaining a an open-air, seven-foot-high, you know, facility on top of the building?
So the ordinance, so the height limitation is 40 feet. The ordinance specifically provides a number of height exceptions. So things like the stairwell, the elevator shaft, and there's a chimney. There's other stuff throughout the city that also is allowed to go taller than 40 feet. That's how Kate Milling has all their very tall, far more than 40-foot structures up there. The zoning ordinance doesn't address like an open-air rooftop deck specifically, but in terms of the height issues, it appears that what is shown there would be the zoning ordinance in terms of the building height. And those things that are taller than 40 feet would fall within one of the allowable exceptions because they're not, it's not like an occupied unit above 40 feet.
Thank you.
I'm in that Woodsman, I live at 525 North Hudson Street. And when I think of a problem, I think of what's the cost and the benefits and the cost. So I'm thinking, okay, so we're sitting here status quo, what's gonna be the benefit of having this? And I walk by that building four times a day. And just looking at the building, if it was a house, I would think, there's not enough room to live here. What is the setback from the road? And as I've talked to my neighbors on Riverside, who are very concerned about the traffic on that road, which is getting more and more as people are circumventing the intersection. So, she said that she had a problem with her house because of how many feet from the road. Well, if you've been by there, from the building to the road is no feet. Like, where would a child throw a ball? Or where would a person, like you said, a boat? Or what would they have there? They would have nothing. It's inhabitable, I believe, for a house. For a single-family house, there's not enough space there for anything. Maybe they could make do, maybe I have a luxurious idea of how much space I want around my house, but you've got a restaurant right next to it and a drop-off, you're on the edge. Maybe there would be other things, and I'm impressed with you people. My son and son-in-law are engineers that develop huge properties for Erickson Living. I don't know if you're familiar with that. He's a, anyway, I encourage your enthusiasm, your hope, your planning. I, my information's good that you have what used to be the roller rink here. You know, maybe there's another place, but if we're having all these events to bring people in for girls' night out and this and this, we want to bring all that money into town. And this is why, this, I grew up in Ionia, this is why Lowell is Lowell and Ionia's not. It's because your chamber of commerce are bringing these people into town. So, parking, you have to make it user-friendly. You have to have parking that they can come in and they can walk around. You've got a social district, you're trying to encourage this walking at night, where are they gonna walk? Are the people gonna be parking along Riverside? Are they gonna be parking where the funeral, Parlor Parks, the funeral home is all around that street? I just don't understand it. And let's say there was a big benefit, I would say, okay, then we're gonna have to suck it up. We're gonna have to give school money for this, we're gonna have to make do. This is a trade-off that we're willing to take because there's a greater benefit that we're gonna accrue. But I don't see it, we're doing okay right now, it seems like for me. So if somebody's gonna come and tilt this, it's gotta be a great benefit. And I hope you people can do something to this roller skate where I broke my arm in four places. It would be a happy ending for that place because it's an eyesore.
You don't want us to see that?
And there's space there, you've got room to park, it would be much better. From a livability standpoint, the middle of a shopping area where people are supposed to be having a lovely evening, I don't think that's the right place. But I wish you well and keep your enthusiasm going because that's what life's built on.
Thanks for that. Should work out some kind of plan for...
Hello, my name is Rita Lundstrom, 220 King Street. Two years ago, I believe, you guys were offered $100,000 for that piece of property and you guys turned it down. So I don't understand why you're taking $100,000 now when you've also had a bid for $130,000 and $150,000. That's my question to you guys.
The city doesn't get any of that money, it's, we put a number in there as a minimum bid.
Okay, but you had a bid of $100,000 two years ago and that wasn't good enough and so you put it up for more and now you're taking $100,000.
Not with, not about good enough or not good enough. It was, we picked a proposal last time that we thought best fit the use of the property and that's what the three of them voted yes did this time.
Okay, but it sounds to me like a lot of people don't think this is the best use for that piece of property because it's so small and the parking is gonna be an issue. Thank you.
I know we're not supposed to respond, but it drives me crazy. I'm gonna use three minutes and just say why I voted the way I voted. And I'll also say that the city is speaking and saying no, so I'm getting that message. But the reason I voted the way I voted is I was looking at long-term benefit financially to the city. $150,000 is more than $100, I'm aware of that. But having 14 or 12 units that all are Lowell light and power customers, that all have tax revenue for perpetuity, I believe would balance in favor, would end up being more than $50,000. The other reason I voted that way was because we altered the height. I mean, one of, I voted Greg's was in my top three. If you remember, his structure was a single-story. And then when he tore it down, he realized it used to be a two-story. So we changed things and ended with something that was taller than what it was before. So it didn't represent the end of the world. Also, we ended up with a showboat that was taller than the one we had before. There were people that were upset about that, but the world didn't come to an end. That's the explanation for my vote, but I'm getting the message that it's not flying.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. I liked your enthusiasm, or shit. Oh yeah, but then to tie in the Hope College thing, but Coach at Hope would say false enthusiasm is better than no enthusiasm, but this is real enthusiasm. So, I am the founder, Dean Rosendo of Copper Rock. Just a couple of points. We want a nice project, we want, you know, not, probably can't make everyone happy, but we work hard to sure try. A couple of things, as far as the fire trucks, the building would be fully fire-suppressed. There's pump trucks around, so that's not a big concern. The city won't have to, you know, put new money into fire trucks. Couple of things too, we've talked before, some people have commented on a Lowell feel. Matthew, valuable member of the team, when he was looking for a place to live, him and his wife Haley, this is years back, he's like, I think I'm gonna pick Lowell. Well, they bought, they bought property here, they're building their dream home here. We love this town, we only live, we don't live far from here. So my point is, is like, you know, we do want a local presence here. Let's say Matthew's wife are gonna be residents here. We have talked to Greg Canfield, and I know this isn't typical, we go into a ton of these details. We've worked with Greg, he's our preferred self to do the project for what that's worth. We're trying to have good harmony on every front that we can. To tie in more of the architecture, I'm heading to MSU on Wednesday for a kind of a high-level tour of a new timber-type construction. We don't know if we'll be able to do this building in that style of actual structural materials, but if we can, I think the town will love it. It'll have an old historic feel inside with a warm wood, an actual structural skeleton. I can't guarantee that, I know we want certainty of these, but this will be a project we're actually gonna talk to MSU about. It's a really cool building technology. Couple other things, people have talked, oh, it's too tall. Well, one of the things is we want to get some affordable homes, some housing in Lowell. We have to have a nice balance, that brings in diversity. One way you get to a more affordable home is by going vertical. So that is one driver for what that's worth, that helps. Community is obviously a big driver. Nowhere is set in stone that this will be a restaurant. Those can be shops on the first floor too. I'm not trying to compete with the existing shops, but those can be more shops to be brought in. I think that's important to realize. And I will tell you this, from, we deal with a lot of different, you know, miss you now, could agree. We deal a lot of cities and townships. Been going too long here. But it's important to realize that from our perspective, they've been very good people to work with, very transparent, and I know it's frustrating on that end sometimes, but I will say they've been good to us so far and hopefully that it continues.
Thank you. Anybody?
Municipality. Sorry to extend this, but I have another point of clarification. The whole topic of incentives is a difficult one to understand. But one thing I want to make sure everyone understands, 381 Work Plan, which is again, just a number of a state statute that relates to a specific rule, requires that the state of Michigan reimburse the local school system dollar-for-dollar for any incentive relative to that program, so there would be a net zero impact to the school system. Just wanted to make sure that was clarified. Our personal Fallout 25, I forgot one thing when I was up here before. Is if this goes through, construction starts, where are they gonna put the construction equipment? Are they gonna shut Riverside Drive, Riverside Drive down during construction? Or what, where are they gonna put the equipment? For that roads, a one-way road? Never, I forgot, thank you.
My name is Melinda Castroff and we own Crafterty at 424 Lafayette. So our home would be looking at this. First drawing I saw was a six-story cinder block building. And that's what really riled me up. So I gotta say, I feel a little bit better about this. I still think it should be a lot, a lot smaller. And my main question is, how's this benefit people in Lowell that are already paying astronomical taxes and driving on roads that are undrivable? That is my question. Because it seems like we don't get the bang for the buck. Our taxes in Lowell are higher than East Grand Rapids and our roads are garbage. And if we put in a building like this and it helps taking care of our roads and stuff, that would be great. But I don't see any of this coming back, like someone brought up pot shops. I'm not against pot. I do edibles at night to sleep, I'm not against it. But that was supposed to generate a whole bunch of income too. So it seems to me it's always follow the money, follow the money, follow the money. And it starts at a very small local level like this and it builds up into what we've got going on in Washington right now. And I was not aware that this was happening. I found out via a friend. So it's been kind of hush-hush and the people in the city who pay a lot of taxes, and I'm talking a lot. We've got a 1,400-square-foot house that costs us $3,000 a year in taxes. We can't drive on the road on North Lafayette, it is crap. So I guess that's my main concern, is like, yeah, it's the next place to be, but who wants to come here if it's gonna be like Caledonia or Rockford? Is that what we're looking for? That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just a couple more things, I guess, speaking on the taxes. And we hope this certainly adds, you know, a lot of tax debt to the city, kind of like what Cliff mentioned. That's one of the pros for the project, I think. And then just kind of pay apart a few notes, but one of the questions was kind of, who's the ownership, the developer, who's gonna manage all that? That's us. And that's what we do professionally for our jobs all day, every day. You know, this isn't gonna be a side project, we're excited about it and we've been having regular meetings and we're gonna continue that and dive right in. One, I think the important things for the city was somebody who's gonna do that. And, you know, we're professionals, this is what we do, we're excited about it. But to answer your question, Mr. Parker, that's us on the ownership, property management side, contracting, really all of it. And then, I think, one thing too, I think, to discuss on the project side and specifics, there's still certainly a lot of meetings, both with the council and planning commission to hammer out some specifics. You know, we were voted kind of based on the project, but everybody had very, very prelim concepts for the project and it was voted more on the person. And so, that's why we were awarded and that's why we started to immediately make steps and tweak the plans based on what we have heard and had meetings and charged for it is because we were preliminarily awarded. And we were just eager to continue down that path. And I think it's important enough to vote tonight, it's more on us and hopefully we've taken good steps to show you guys that, you know, we're gonna get after it right away and continue to work with you and continue to hear the comments. And we're looking forward to do a project there. And we certainly hope that you feel our organization is the right one to make something happen there as, you know, obviously this is the third time that it's been out for a request or proposal. Make sure it doesn't miss anything. Yeah, I think that's good.
Thanks.
Okay, I have two letters to read in the record. To the City Council, my name is Jan Quiggle and I have been a Lowell resident for over 40 years. I have to tell you that I am opposed to the building of the high-rise on my side of the river, on Riverside Drive. I believe there already is a problem with parking and this will not, and this will just add to it. I would ask you to reconsider your decision, possibly build this high-rise in a different location. location. Just imagine someone wanting to build a high-rise that close to where you live and perhaps you will see my position more clearly. Thank you in advance for taking my request into consideration. Sincerely, Jan Quiggle, 216 Riverside Drive. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This letter is to address future use of the line check building located on Riverside Drive, Lowell, Michigan. I feel Greg Canfield's plan to make this into a hotel is the best use of this property. It will create revenue for our community without creating more parking issues. I've heard from business owners, more hotel space could be used for various events held in Lowell. Riverwalk, Christmas through Lowell, girls' night out. More hotel space could also be utilized when people are in town for weddings, class reunions, businesses, business meetings, et cetera. This hotel could be used to attract visitors to Lowell. The view itself is beautiful. We have great hiking and outdoor activities, headquarters for the North Country Trails, Lowell Trailway, and the Weggie Foundation natural area. This could also be a great draw for people in the area to visit John Ball Park and/or Frederick Martyr Gardens as it is close, yet small town by not a big city. The hotel will bring people and revenue to our beautiful community without creating parking issues as the parking will be housed under the rooms. The people in town for any of the above events will bring more revenue to our businesses and restaurants. Thank you, Jenny Teachout, 328 North Jefferson.
All right, last change. Yeah, anybody else?
I spoke out of turn, Parkus. Don't be like Cliff.
When we sit up here and we listen to what all of you people have to say, that's what we're supposed to do. If we get into a one-on-one, we'll all be here until 3 o'clock in the morning. That's why we sit and we listen. Everybody in this room knows exactly where you can find me and yet you come in here. You don't come into my store and say, can we have a conversation? It just doesn't happen. So I appreciate everything you guys have to say. My business is there, I am planning on putting apartments up above ours. So I guess if I do that, then we're gonna have an issue with six to 12 parking spaces that I'm gonna be generating. So it doesn't, parking over on that side is terrible and we all do what we have to do. I agree, all business owners and employees should be parking alongside Lowell Light Power. My people park against the back row or on the cement pad when it's available, behind The tax dollars, like Cliff said, is a long-term revenue source. If the hotel's there, it doesn't matter. You're taking up parking. If it's a restaurant, it's taking up parking spaces. If it's a multi-use business, it's still taking up parking spaces. All proposals, we're looking at taking anywhere from 10 to potentially 25 parking spots that we just don't have. And as a building owner, I wanna add and build mine and I'm gonna be adding to the stress of it. I'm curious, when that day comes, will you people all come to me and holler at me because I'm turning a building that I paid for into something more to allow my wife and I to retire from our current jobs? I guess we're gonna find out in the next year. So, that's it.
All right. Any other council comments?
Well, I just wanna thank everybody for coming in and expressing your opinion. I can say that I, there's a few people in this room that I have spoken to, but there's an awful lot of people that I've spoken to that are not here tonight and express concerns for or against the thing. So to say that, that hopefully we're available. I live here, I'm here in town, I'm easily accessible, so if somebody did wanna have a one-on-one, I'd be more happy to meet them and discuss why I voted the way I did or where my concerns lie with all of the projects. It wasn't just Copper Rock that I had a question about. There was, every proposal had something that I just couldn't quite grasp or a lot of questions, so they still remain today, so.
So, I have one to address a few things. I just moved to Lowell in 2019. I am a new resident, new here, by all means, you can call me new. But when I came here, I came here because Lowell has a business. Lowell's quaint, Lowell's comfortable, Lowell is kind, Lowell progresses. We move, we transform, we build, we work together to create a community. And so, one, I appreciate everybody coming to meetings. But two, I think that I get a little bit upset when people come to meetings upset and then they say something is hush-hush. It's not hush-hush, it's been papers, it's been on Facebook, it's been on the city website, it's been posted appropriately. We've done all the right steps. We've been in this situation for weeks now, talking about bids, looking at bids, hearing bids. I've been through this process twice now. So this is not a hush-hush project, this is not jumping the gun, this is not taking the first bid we think we like best. We are all thoughtful people and so when we hear bids, we are thoughtful about it. And I am comfortable and I have great hope, if that's the word of the day, that Copper Rock could transform and progress the line check to something more and still make it what Lowell is about. And so that's why I voted the way that I did. But I do appreciate everybody coming here and sharing their opinion and they will all tell you that I love it when we have full house, I love it when our community is involved, whether you agree with me or not. That's not why I figure, I spent here to hear you and to represent Lowell and what I believe it can be.
Thank you. I was gonna address that as well because I take some offense to saying hush-hush and behind closed doors. I believe a couple of people on the internet and on the news called it a cash grab. We don't, it's not our property, we're not gonna make a dime off it. It was not behind closed doors, the RFP was published right up to the statute listed in the newspaper. The meeting minutes will reflect that we discussed the time and date for proposals numerous times in open meetings. And the meeting to present the proposals was an open meeting. We allowed anybody and anybody who wanted to come and sit and listen. So I know the first look article, whoever was talking about it, was I think New Year's resolutions a couple of years ago. And I took it to heart and I tried to share this board with transparency in mind and I believe all the council members sitting up here have done that too. I've mentioned numerous times how accessible we are and so to be called hush-hush when we've gone out of our way to do this publicly and allowed for public comment now, two meetings in a row, and let the resolution sit 20 days. So I take a little bit of offense to that, but I do thank everybody for coming and using your five minutes. So we have a couple of options here. Everybody...
I have one more thing to say.
No, go ahead.
We're required by law, funny thing about Lansing, they make requirements about us regarding transparency that they do not practice.
No.
I've said that numerous times, I'm sticking to it. They do stuff all the time without, everything we did was recorded. Do you know how difficult it is to discuss five proposals knowing that you're being recorded? Have you ever interviewed anybody for a job? Would you like everybody you interviewed to be able to listen to you deliberate about them and knowing that it's being recorded? So everything we do, we do according to the law that's set out by Lansing. Everything is in the open, everything is recorded, you can go on YouTube and watch it right now.
Eric Parkus, I mentioned the first look article, not for hush-hush at all and I didn't use those words. The only reason I mentioned that when I said transparency is I was hoping for some community back-and-forth discussion, just like we're doing now. The previous meeting, we all talked and then you didn't, we didn't get to hear your thoughts of what we just said now. So that is why I mentioned that word, but I, of course, in no way am saying anything hush-hush here.
No, thank you.
You've been very good about posting things and being upfront, so thank you.
All right, so if everybody is comfortable with how they're gonna vote, a motion and a second for resolution 2422, we take it to a vote. We also have the option to table it.
Can, if we table it, can we have another meeting to have another discussion like what we had in here?
If it's tabled, my idea was to hold a public hearing at the next meeting. Unless the rest of the council is confident in which direction they'd like to vote, we can vote on it now.
Well, I think I personally would like to table it and have this discussion at our next meeting to have a little bit more chance to reflect. Because what was said tonight, believe me, it all comes into my little earring, but I'll have to sit and watch the YouTube videos to get a better understanding of everything. And I personally would just like the time to think about it, listen to what they have said, would like to find folks to come back and have another roundtable discussion.
So all of last week I was concerned that I wasn't sure how I was gonna vote coming in at tonight and that's why I had reached out to the city attorney and found out about public hearings and our ability to have them for this proposal and I was assured we could and that tabling it for two weeks was also an option, which I'm supportive of, but after two weeks ago and then again tonight, I would be happy to table it and I would be happy to have a public hearing, but I'm more confident which direction I'm gonna vote after tonight than I was.
I'm a flip-flop, I'm a flip-flop, you guys. Well, the people have spoken in my ears and I'm supposed to represent them, so, I mean, if you guys wanna think about it for two more weeks, fine, but...
I'd entertain either a motion to vote on resolution 2422 or a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to vote on the proposal.
I'll support that.
All right, a motion and a second to approve resolution 2422. Any discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeHore?
No.
Councilmember Sosmehoe?
No.
Councilmember Jankovic?
I wanted to vote yes, but I've been keeping track of N's and Y's, I gotta go with no.
Councilmember Chambers?
Along with Cliff, I've been keeping track too and I'm gonna vote yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, so this will return to Lowell business for the next, Jessica will be here to explain us our next steps at the next meeting, but there needs to be no further discussion on it tonight. So what we'll do now, because I'm sure not everybody here wants to talk about any of the other agenda items, so we'll take a quick five-minute break that'll allow anybody who wants to go home to go home and anybody who wants to stay is more than welcome to stay. And we'll reconvene at 8:40 PM.